Good evening. It is Tuesday, June eighth, two thousand and twenty-one. At six P. M. My name is Joe Baker and as Mayor of Kennedy, Texas, it is my honor to welcome everyone here tonight and call this regular meeting of the Kennedy City Council to order. I will now call the roll and establish whether or not quorum is present. District one, council member Cindy Sines.
Here.
District two, council member John Rodriguez.
Here.
District three, council member Chris Parker.
Here.
District four, council member James Douglas.
Here.
District five, council member Sandra Shul.
Here.
Five members of the city council are present and we have a quorum present this evening. Recently, I reached out to all the pastors who serve churches in the Kennedy area. And I'm very pleased to announce that so far, we have six local pastors who have offered to take turns each month to lead us in prayer before each of our regular city council meetings. I want to express my appreciation to all of them for accepting this invitation. If everyone will please rise, I would like to welcome Trey Hill, Pastor of Fort Fellowship Church, who is graciously greeted to lead us all in prayer tonight. The prayer will be immediately followed by the pledge of allegiance. Thank you, Mayor Baker, for allowing us to speak as ministers. And so I'd ask that you bow for a prayer. Heavenly Father, we just come before you this evening in the wonderful name of Jesus. We thank you for this wonderful city of Kennedy. We thank you for the men and women that are gathered here today to make decisions for the betterment of this city. We ask you for wisdom in each one of their lives and each one of their decisions. We thank you for a spirit of unity. We thank you for peace over this meeting. We thank you for that in Jesus' name we pray. Amen. My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you Pastor Hill. The next item on our agenda is citizen comment. Do we have any citizen comments this evening, Mr. Lynn?
Um, no, sir.
Is there anyone present that would like to make a comment this evening? If not, we'll move along to item number six, departmental reports. The first report on the list is from our public works director.
Our start, I'll start off with some water. Uh, out at our old plant, we produce to the distribution forty-three point nine sixty-nine million gallons of water per the month. We had a total of water loss of one point nine million gallons at a four point four percent water loss. Out at the wastewater treatment plant, we had a flow of forty-one million gallons per the month. And you also notice we had nine inches of rain for the month too, so that contributed to a lot of the flow. Uh, our departments completed, that number's wrong, have a couple of quality reports, but one thousand forty-seven service orders for the month. And, uh, if you go down to on the first page under T C Q, I've got an item number nine there. That was supposed to be a one. We're working on an agreed order that that I talked a little bit about last month, I believe, uh, that goes back to twenty-fourteen and so forth. And we're working with T C Q on that. We've had several extensions on this and we're continuing to ask for another extension. Hopefully, this will be the last one because these two items are the service pump capacity and well capacity that, uh, Mr. Lynn, I'm sure will mention here in a little while, uh, about the new well fields coming in, so, uh, looking forward to being able to finally clean those up and look at that for. We completed and mailed off the certificate of delivery for the twenty-twenty CCRs last month. We, uh, are continuing to work on the S C P documentation for phase two at the wastewater treatment plant. Have a due date of June twenty-eighth on that. And I'm just waiting on one more piece of information to compile that report and get that off of T C Q. We had quite a bit of training for this month. Uh, we had Christopher Mears that completed the twenty-hour basic wastewater. Uh, Andrew Gilli completed the twenty-hour basic wastewater. Coach Brian has completed twenty-hour water distribution class. Uh, he's taken those classes that he's taken. This is the last one, so he can upgrade to a Class C water. And, uh, then we had a safety meeting and training video on the twenty-seventh of last month on trench safety. Uh, we've been having a lot of issues and a lot of leaks and repairs lately with deep holes and ditches. And so we're trying to get the guys trained in that and putting together our P P E and stuff for that and working with that. And then, uh, I hate to mention it myself, but I obtained a non-commercial political pesticide applicator's license, so now we can spray internally. We had, uh, no violations for the month of May at the wastewater plant. And, uh, we had two S S Os that we submitted to T C Q. And I'll just throw this in, uh, yesterday, and, uh, we completed the tie-in on ground road for the new water main. And, all right, uh, I do apologize for taking so long with that, but while we were waiting on the permit where we could actually dig in that intersection, just in case we had to go further to the intersection, uh, S L P, you know, was working somewhere else. They were in the middle of something, so that's why it took an extra week or so for them to get back because they had pulled off to do do that job, waiting on that permit. As it turned out, we were in their easement, but we didn't have to go any further. We got that tied in, found out some, uh, good stuff going there. And, uh, so they'll continue probably be there next day or two for finalization of cleaning up and and so forth, so. So we'll be glad to get that behind us and then, uh, so maybe we quit fixing lakes on ground road for a while. At least up to New Oasis anyway. That's kind of all the highlights at this time. Well, uh, we are continuing to work with the C D B G grant for the sewer lines over on, uh, Wakehold and Tilden, I believe. And I'm staying in touch with him. In fact, today I received an email, uh, I believe I forwarded that to Mr. Lynn. He's probably not had time to look at it. He was waiting this afternoon with the finalization of documents and, uh, the plans to be submitted to T C Q with our approval. Uh, I got them kind of late, so I didn't have a lot of time to go over, but I'll look through those tomorrow and and, uh, see how they are and select a way to get those submitted to T C Q. And, uh, when they can start moving forward on on that, uh, another step closer. I didn't really go by my list here, but if there's anything y'all would like to ask, feel free.
I've got a question, Mr. Higgins. Uh, notice here that it said start a new work schedule for the R O plant. What's the new schedule was what's going on there?
Well, uh, we are coming in on Saturdays and Sundays anyway.
Right.
Uh, sometimes it's two to five hours depending on what's going on. Uh, and so we created a seven-day a work week, so the plant and the wastewater plant will be covered from eight to five with somebody there Monday through Friday. Uh, well, seven days a week.
Right.
So, uh, that's what we've done and we've created that and got it on a rotation where the operators, uh, they may be there by themselves. They call somebody, they get in a bind. Some days they'll be two theirs and then some days, some weeks they'll have three days off. And at the other plant, it just depends on how the rotation works, you know, but that way they still get their forty hours during the week or during the paid week.
Right.
And then the plant's still covered seven days a week. And it kind of paid off honestly. Uh, we had a little issue at the wastewater plant Saturday, Saturday, that it was nice that somebody was there and caught that, so.
Right.
Because if they hadn't been there all day, they wouldn't have got caught until Saturday afternoon or around lunch when they come in. So, I mean, you can't be there all the time, but, you know, just trying to keep it covered.
Any further questions for Mr. Higgins? Anything else, Mr. Higgins? Is that covered for this month?
That's probably enough.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is the police chief, Port Chief Ash.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. I just have a real short one this evening. We got other things to do, so. Uh, for our, uh, our animal control, I did have, um, one of our, um, officers switch over to parks. And so we're now in the process of trying to hire a second animal control officer. Uh, so we still just have the one out there now, but if you know anybody who's looking for animal control, tell them to apply. We need to get somebody hired in that spot. Uh, for his numbers last month, he's still, he was the one guy, he's still, he picked up, uh, fourteen dogs, twenty-one cats. I'll tell you, we had three of them reclaimed by owners. The rescue group took twelve of them. He also picked up two snakes, one possum, two raccoons, and an armadillo. Uh, issued two warnings and two citations. Uh, currently where he's, he's doing a lot more cat traps now. Again, that's going to be the big, biggest problem, I know, cats, and we're, so he's working on a lot more of that. For the police, uh, our school year has now ended, uh, so my school resource officer, uh, will be moving over to work, have her work at basically the park, uh, Escondido and the sports complex. She'll be spending most of her time down there, uh, using either patrol. We also have the carts she can use. She can do both of those. We all kind of use her to fill in a little bit if somebody needs a vacation or whatever, but that her main job will be down there. She spent the last few days down there at the park talking to people, being seen invisibly. And, uh, already had real positive comments from people about seeing her down there, so she'll be down there. We did have a big investigation that we completed that was going on for a while. It started last year before COVID closed down all the cameras. Uh, we were working on our camera investigation. This was a multi-agency, multi-county investigation on cameras. Uh, we closed down the one we had in town. Uh, we seized there, we took all the machines and all the cash along with other evidence out of the, out of the, out of the building. Uh, currently, the building is under seizure until we determine whether or not we can keep it or not, but, uh, we closed it all down, so they can't be used anymore. Uh, that investigation is still continuing on and still, uh, much bigger and could keep growing, but, uh, that is the only game room we had in town and is currently closed, so. Sergeant Marion, just my, uh, C I D sergeant, completed the Texas Police Chiefs Leadership Course. It's a three-week course, uh, very intensive, uh, based on, uh, the model from, uh, the military categories. Uh, this is something new that the police chiefs are doing and we're real glad he was able to get a chance to do that. It's, uh, it's here in Victoria. They're normally not down this part of the state, so we're very happy to be able to get into that. Uh, I didn't put on here, but if y'all want me to give a quick update on the event in July, um, we are all set. We now have the movie set. Uh, it's going to be a movie called Coco. It's a, um, animated, uh, G rated movies, uh, very highly recommended to people who do the movies recommend it as well. Uh, they say it's very popular. Fireworks are locked in. Uh, we now have four, three, three food trucks and then one stand that has funnel cakes and kettle corn. So we also have the three food trucks that do, uh, one is ice cream and snow cones, one is snack foods, and the other one is Mexican food. So we have all that going. Everything else is pretty well locked in, so I think we'll, we have our popcorn machine now, uh, so we can hand out popcorn as well for the event, so. Uh, everybody come out and see, it starts at six o'clock in the evening. Movie starts at about, uh, eight forty-five in the evening and fireworks will follow the end of the movie. Questions?
I have a question about the the event in July.
Yes.
The, I assume the food trucks are selling their products. Are we giving, are we providing anything for the community on our side?
No, they, they basically, you know, they come and sell, uh, we have asked them just to come, uh, we, uh, they're, no, they just, you just buy directly from them.
Right.
The city has no financial in any way.
Gotcha. But are we providing like?
We're providing bottles of water, which are donated by Walmart, and then the popcorn will be provided as well.
Yeah, Walmart has given us a big case, lots and lots of water. Uh, so we'll hand out water. We also have, I'm sorry, got to, we have Walmart, we have water and popcorn. I have, uh, glow sticks for the kids, frisbees, you know, can hand out stuff like that as well.
Perfect.
Yeah, should be loads of fun.
Sounds great. Looking forward to it and hopefully the weather will cooperate. Any other questions for the chief?
Oh, I do have one other question. Um, this is probably, I mean, it's related to the S R O. Is there a plan to, I believe, the contract that we have between the city and the school district is that one entity provides a vehicle? Is that the school or the city?
Yeah, right now, we just renewed the contract. I think the K I F D just renewed the contract. Uh, speaking to Mr. Lynn, we continue, we're, we're going to continue to provide the vehicle. Uh, we have one that she can use now, and then our hope is if I get some new ones this year, I'll pass down another one to her and we'll just continue to provide that vehicle.
But the only concern I have is like almost past year, we had some situations where transports had to be done and stuff, and so I just want to make sure that, you know, granted, most of the time is not going to be involved.
Right.
You know, hundred twenty-mile round trips, but, you know, in the event that that has to happen.
When those happen, usually what you do is go get one of the marked vehicles and with a cage in it. But yes, the goal is hopefully by at the early, uh, the next fiscal year, we'll get some new ones in, like a pass down her fully marked with a cage in it and everything. I'm sorry.
Perfect.
A barrier.
All right. Sounds good.
And that officer can help step up park patrol?
During the summer, she'll be down there. Her main, uh, main focus will be there at, uh, Escondido and at the sports complex when there's events there. We're going to kind of vary our days and hours a little bit, uh, mainly during the day, but, uh, we'll kind of typically vary around a little bit so you can see different times.
Some local residents have told me or asked me if there was some way to step up the visible presence of law enforcement at the park. So I think that'll be a good thing, especially as the activity increases in the summer.
But even today, today, look, Tuesday, uh, the splash pad was, was going all day. Uh, we had a buzz from Skidmore, I think it was, came in, brought kids in today to be at the, the splash pad. So yes, it's, the, the splash pad area and the skateboard park is, is very active. There are a lot of people there for the day.
That's a good thing. Any other questions for the chief? Thank you, chief. The next report is Code Compliance, and I understand Mr. Albiar is not able to be here this evening, but, uh, Mr. Lynn, you'll present his report?
Thank you, Mayor, council. So I'm going to try to run out this as quickly as, uh, as I can for you guys. So the building department for the month, uh, it looks like they did a total of residential building permits. They had a total of twenty-two, and that was pretty much sixteen electrical and, uh, six building. And residential inspections, they did sixteen. Four of those were plumbing, twelve were electrical. Commercial building permits, they did one building permit and they did, uh, one commercial electrical inspection. They had two commercial plants submitted to Bureau of Veritas for approval. One was for structural, one was for sprinkler system. They issued out some violations. They issued a total of, uh, fifteen violations, one for zoning, eight for dangers, dilapidated structures, four warnings and, uh, two letters. Uh, they didn't report any new businesses coming to Kennedy just yet, uh, and the current and future projects. One thing I want to touch on before I move off of this is, uh, I realize it's on a lot of residents' minds and councils' minds and mayor's mind and has been for quite some time on sixty gram road. Uh, we are actively working. Uh, however, what I have instructed them to do, just so everybody knows, um, we have a whole bunch of documentation on that, but I want them, since we brought back Mr. Albiar and he is now back and it's fresh, I want him to go through the process again, since we have new city attorneys. That way, we can give the city attorneys all the documentation and all the ammunition they need so that we can do what we need to do to rectify the situation one way or another. Okay? So it's going to take a little bit more time, but we are actively working that, just so everybody knows.
Are city staff currently, uh, cutting the grass at that location?
Yes, sir, they are. What they do is they go through the process of sending out the letters and everything. Uh, Ms. Gad and I have discussed this and currently our ordinance states that we have to wait fifteen days, but state code only says seven. So at some point in time, we'll revisit that and try to move towards the state code, which will shorten the timeframe in between letters and things of that nature that we have to issue so we can get on it more often. But right now, we still have to follow our protocol, which is fifteen days. So, uh, we, we are working, yes, sir. All right, very good. All right, so then we'll move into the Code Compliance report real quick. Well, he has a lot here, so we're just going to say he closed four cases and, uh, they issued eight warnings. Uh, they have fourteen total active cases. He has them all broken down very nicely for everyone. Um, and then he has down there on the second page, properties he claimed due to owners not responding, uh, was one oh-two Long East Street. Uh, so far, we've got three seventy-seven tied off into that, and they filed two lanes this month, one in five nineteen Tilden and one in one hundred block of Holly and Road. Uh, one of the things I am having to do, just so that everybody is aware, I have got them cost basis accounting their, uh, their fees. So not only is it just labor time now, it is labor time, cost of equipment, cost of fuel, cost of the truck, cost of fuel for the truck, uh, to and from. So, uh, and where we get those numbers from is we pay it mark to market, uh, like they like to say. We'll call like, uh, Sunbelt or United Reynolds will say, how much do you run a truck for a day? And they'll say fifteen dollars an hour, and then that's what we'll charge fifteen dollars an hour. So we're staying along the lines of whatever the market is bearing on this stuff, so. Uh, so these costs are going to go up. Uh, I hate to say it like that for the property owners, but these are non-responsive people, so. Any questions I might can answer for y'all?
I was going to ask about the Graham Road House, but I didn't see it listed on this report.
Right, it's, yeah, he didn't put it on there because we're just basically restarting everything with that.
Yes, sir.
Any, uh, update on Second Street there? They demolished that building?
They actually were out there working on that, um, pulling the bricks off that, the, the crew that we brought in, so they're working on getting that cleaned up, so. I don't know how long that's been. I know it was there before I arrived in Kennedy, so I guess we can say hooray, find some relief that is happening there.
I've been there for a little bit.
A long time. So Mr. Albiar has, has done a great job since he's come back, so.
Any other questions on, uh, Code Compliance? I thought then we'll move on to Streets and Parks Director report?
Good evening. I'll go ahead and, uh, start with the, uh, Parks Department. As far as parks are concerned, uh, as far as the sports complex, I've got it broken down by the sports pump complex. Uh, the guys out there have been very, very busy, uh, dragging fields and sweeping for twenty days. We ended up with, uh, approximately thirty-eight Little League games this month, five Kennedy and high, uh, high school and, uh, middle school games, and thirteen playoff games, both, uh, baseball and softball. Uh, baseball and softball with the playoffs, we've had, uh, tons of people with foot traffic coming through, giving a lot of positive vibes and, uh, you know, just giving us a lot of positive feedback. There are a couple of things that we'll, we'll work on out there, but, uh, nothing really major. Also, then we have the kids parking pavilion, uh, picking up out there, just, uh, also just trimming and mowing. The trimming and mowing are, are one of those things. It's, it's a constant, especially with the trash. We just, we have a, a ton of kids and, and people that are using pavilions off and on throughout the week, during the work week. Uh, we see a lot of people there around noon time. They'll go take their lunch break, whatnot. A lot of times, they don't end up dumping their trash in the receptacles, so it's kind of one of the things to where we're just constantly trying to battle. Some of the, some of the trash and debris, it, it kind of gets blown with the breeze. Uh, so the guys are out there almost every day. Uh, I put on there that they were out there actually cleaning up the pavilion twelve days. Uh, when it comes to cleaning up the pavilion, a lot of times it's from, uh, the rentals. Uh, people rent the, the pavilion on the weekends, whatnot. Uh, the walking trail, the bridge and the basketball courts are similar to all of that to where they're just constantly having to, to pick up the trash and, and the debris. Uh, the mowing and weeding, it's, it's the same thing. So then we have also the, the lots there on Nottingham and, uh, the soccer fields that grow a lot of vegetation and stuff. And now on the, the street side for the, for the month, uh, the crews did, uh, twelve days of grading and hand patching, which ended up with seventy-five cubic yards of asphalt that was used during the grading and hand patching. Uh, they patched a total of ninety-eight potholes during an eleven-day stretch, which totaled up to thirty-eight cubic yards of material, so we totaled out a hundred and thirteen cubic yards for the month. Uh, on that, it probably would have been a lot more. We just ran out of, of our asphaltic material and we were having issues getting some of the asphalt in from different vendors. Uh, I called four different vendors that I'm familiar with and, uh, a lot of them were having issues. At one point, it was the trucking, the trucking industry with the, the fuel and everything else fluctuating. They were kind of trying to figure out some of that, but then it turned into one of the deals with the oil. Uh, they were having a shortage, is what I was told by each vendor, uh, on the oil in order to produce the materials. Uh, but we finally got, uh, we got a hundred, uh, tons delivered the other day, so, uh, we'll be good to go on that. Uh, as far as, uh, mowing and weed trimming, we ended up, uh, mowing and weed trimming thirty of different roadways, including the alleyways. Uh, the alleyways are, are kind of time-consuming, especially when you're going around, uh, the majority of the, the cleanouts and, and stuff like that that we have in the alleys and some of the easements. Uh, crews also removed one sign, repaired four signs and, uh, used four bags of ready mix, cement in order to reinstall and, uh, some of those signs that needed to be repaired. Uh, as far as construction, uh, they were doing some construction along the sidewalks inside the complex, kind of threw it all together and then on the round, on around the backside to where we ended up having to manipulate and move approximately thirty-eight cubic yards of topsoil to kind of fill in somewhere along the sidewalks and stuff like that with the rain. You've got some of the, the topsoil that had kind of eroded off, so we filled a lot of that in, or the guys filled a lot of that in. And we've got actually good grass vegetation growing up alongside the, uh, the concrete sidewalk, so that's a good thing to see. Uh, guys hauled off fourteen trailer loads of brush to the collection station as well, delivered twelve trash carts or replaced twelve trash carts, delivered one additional and four new. So also, uh, placed two different, uh, handicap stickers on the carts. That's what I have on that report. Any questions?
I have a couple of questions, um, on the park department.
All right.
Is, do we have something in place to monitor damages on park equipment? Like, do we have a process that, you know, there's frequent checks or monthly checks or what, what have you, or do we just wait for someone to report damages?
If the guy sees something that's new that hadn't been there because they're out there day to day, they'll let either myself know or they'll call, uh, City Hall to report new damages. Uh, the majority of the damage that's there on some of the equipment is The majority of the damage that's there on some of the equipment is old damage that's been there for quite a while. The other way that we kind of track some of that stuff or try to track it is through the surveillance system that the chief has out there. We're in the process of, once Building C, the bathrooms get completed, we're going to set up another camera or a couple of cameras up there on top and it'll be able to kind of see that kit part a lot better towards the pavilion and also enter again who's coming in and out from the park.
Okay. Yeah, I saw some stuff on Facebook about some of the, I don't remember which piece of equipment it was.
Might have been one of the books and maybe one of the...
Yeah, there was some stuff damaged and I just, I mean, I told them, I called City Hall and let them know. I said, "No, if we had like a, anything in place where like, you know, y'all check monthly, quarterly or anything for damages or if we just wait for people to let us know?"
No, they're out there dating.
Okay.
Dating, if we find something new, we go ahead and document it and see what we can do as far as replacing some of the stuff. If it's badly damaged, we'll go ahead and try to see what the cost is and replace whatever needs to be replaced.
Okay. And then the other question I have on the Street Department, do y'all have a process in place for replacing signs or is it something that if you see it, you notate it?
It's one of those things to where when you come across it, we make the notation, we'll go ahead and take care of it. Right now, we're actually in the process of putting new skins on some of the stop signs. We've come to realize that it's a lot cheaper to go ahead and just purchase the skins and place them over the top of the existing stop sign because there's several that I've come across in doing some of the cleaning back there in the back of the shop. We've come across complete, brand-new stop signs. If they're damaged to where they're bent, whatnot, we'll replace the sign, but if they're in good condition, they've just been spray painted on or they're just completely faded, we'll just replace it with a skin.
Okay. Because I know there's, I think it's a speed limit sign?
Thirty, right there off of Fifth Street.
Fifth Street and school area.
And on those, anything other than the stop and the yield, we're having to get it manufactured. So it's one of the things that, it's just a matter of time. There's different vendors that do it, so it's just a matter of trying to see who I can get the better turnaround on.
Sounds good.
I've got a question on the sports complex. On the nights that we have, say, playoff games scheduled, is there some type of schedule with your guys where somebody's there during the playoff, during the game to just keep an eye on things? Like, I know the other night, there was a game that was scheduled at nine o'clock and it was pouring down rain and we had to wait to, for the field to get drug, you know, so to get rid of that water. Is there somebody there, or is there some type of schedule where somebody is there to...
That's me.
That's you, okay.
That's ninety-nine percent of the time, that's me.
That's you, okay.
I'm there at the games because I'm either upstairs, either announcing...
Okay.
Running the scorebook, running the scoreboard...
Okay.
And, or keeping pitch count.
Okay.
But if I'm not present, I do have somebody that comes in...
Okay.
And they're there in my presence. I had someone there the other night, it's just apparently nobody really saw him. He was there, he was texting me back and forth while I was at graduation.
Correct.
And besides receiving phone calls from the sheriff's office and, and a couple of different individuals that were there at the complex, I had kind of plainly made it known that I was going to be at graduation because it was my daughter that was graduating.
Sure, sure.
But the calls and the text messages and nothing seemed to stop between, I'd say, seven-thirty till close to nine-forty-five when I got out there.
Okay.
But when it's, when it's pouring down rain, it's just one of those things, even though we have turf, that backfield, the baseball field is going to be the, probably the last that will drain.
Correct.
It has probably the poorest drainage on the whole complex.
Okay.
The three softball fields or Little League fields, whatever you want to call them, they have better drainage and I don't know if it's just because of the way it's set and plus you've got a lot more territory on the baseball field to cover and it's got a runoff. They have squeegees out there, we've come to realize the squeegees don't work as good as those push rooms.
Okay.
Seem to work a lot better for the water that stands in some of those areas.
Correct.
Something that we had noted probably about a month ago, the first good heavy rain that we received on that field, I was out there doing some work inside the press box, getting ready for one of the games. And when it did rain, it ponded water in two separate areas. One on the infield directly behind the pitcher's mound, coming around from the shortstop area to second basement position, and then there was another spot right around center field.
Okay.
It's just one of them things that we're, it's just a matter of time.
I was just curious if we had a, you know, a presence there during the playoff game, just so people can know we're there if there's ever a situation.
Yeah, and that was actually, that was actually the first playoff game that I wasn't there.
Okay.
But I did have somebody there...
Sure.
In my presence and we also had PD there at the request of the two playoff teams because those were actually the two, last two defending state champs that we had playing there, which was the Henderson Bay area.
Is there anything that can be done in terms of a retrofit to improve the drainage for that field or has anybody looked into that?
I've been back and forth with different, different companies that do some of the work for the turf. That remedy's actually going to probably require them peeling back the turf completely and having to go in there and redo the base.
Nothing simple then?
No. Because we actually tried to raise it manually and sprinkle sand and some of the BBs in there and it's just, when I'm talking about a large area, it's just tough to try to have a five-gallon bucket and kind of go across. So it's something that they'll have to get right there at the seams, peel it all back and then it's just one of the things that when they bring in their equipment, we'll have to peel a lot more turf in order for them not to tear up the turf that we have.
Any further questions? If not, thank you for your report. Next report on the list is City Secretary, Fire Department and Court Report. Ms. Bevan?
Good evening, Mayor, Council. The City Secretary report for the month of May, we had one new hiring administration. There was one separation in the Streets Department. There are several vacancies in the city right now, the Streets, Parks Utility Building and Animal Control. I do plan to start trying to post those this month and they will be in the Karnes County White and T M L. For the fire report, they responded to nine calls and two cancellations. The calls included one water well drilling, two gas leaks, two car fires, two fire alarms, one power line and one Karnes County Sheriff's Office and opening ATM for game room. And Fire Chief Brian and his first captain attended the quarterly fire chiefs meeting in Portland, Texas this year. And they assisted in the Kennedy Elementary setting up the dunking booth for the annual Fun Day event. And they wanted to report that the Karnes County Training Center grand opening moved to June second due to the weather. For the court report, they saw a hundred and thirty-six defendants and collected a total of twenty-six thousand with a net to the city of twenty thousand dollars.
Any questions from Ms. Bevan regarding these reports?
Can we also post those openings on our Facebook page and our website as well?
I am actually working on getting them set up to be able to post onto the city website. In regards to the city Facebook, we have posted on the Facebook, we have to have a retention for it and we don't have a way to back that up to be able to provide that for everyone.
Is there a way like, if we post something to the website, can we share, like, for example, I'm not a web designer, so I don't know, but if I go to like any school district's website, I can share a link that takes me right to their job openings?
I actually...
Is that possible for us to do?
I was on the phone this week with IT, we're trying to see what we can do for that. I am in the process of that.
Because I, I mean, I know a lot of people, I get the countywide paper every week. I don't always read the countywide paper every week. Usually, if it's online, I'll see it, if it's in print, sometimes don't, unless I know I'm in it, but, or someone else. But a lot of people are just more social media savvy.
My big advocate for the city website and I do want to make sure that anybody needs to be have one posted there.
Sounds good.
Any other questions? Thank you for your report. Item number seven, City Manager Report. Mr. Wayne?
Before I begin, I'd like to say thank you to Ms. Bevan and to Mr. Higgins and Chief Ash and Mr. Hernandez and Mr. Albiar. I'm not certain what each of you think, okay? But I have been dealing with personnel since I was sixteen years old, which puts me about the thirty-eight-year range. And I will tell you right now, there is no finer or simpler team in the state of Texas than what the city of Kennedy has right now. The knowledge each of these people possess of their particular job functions is beyond belief. We were, we were very lucky to get a lot of people that we have. A lot of what's going on at the sports complex is almost a direct result of Mr. Hernandez. Years of his umpiring has created the contacts to bring the high school teams here during the playoffs and that. So these are just the type of people that you, as a council and a mayor and a governing body and the residents of this town have actually worked for them. You have some of the highest caliber people working in this city as of today. So I just want to say thank you to each of them because they all make sacrifices that none of us see and I appreciate that. I also want to thank the entire staff that they support underneath them. There are guys out there who go out and be down in the hole at two o'clock in the morning while the rest of us are sleeping to make sure that when we wake up in the morning, you turn that knob, you have hot water, get showered, worked. Those guys make sacrifices and ladies, because we do have a few ladies working with us, that again, we don't see and I want to say thank you to each of them as well. So before I get started, I just wanted to take the time, I appreciate you all giving me the latitude to do that tonight. So playing off of what Ms. Bevan said, the Karnes County Emergency Services Training Facility did open. Ms. Bevan, myself and Chief Ash did attend that. It is a wonderful facility. For those of you who were on council whenever the documents were signed, it was money well spent. It was very impressive. They had the tower, which is really nice, they have some oil tanks, which are really nice, they can practice oil stuff, have some natural gas stuff, so they can practice some other things there. It was really a nice, truly a nice setup, so I think our fire department is going to be able to get a lot of valuable and various types of training there that they're going to need. So just to let you all know, that's what I reported saying whenever I was there. The biggest news in the city of Kennedy since May twenty-first is God was good to us. GLO grant, we were awarded forty-three million dollars. Now I have to go out to Alamo, buy six shovels and spray paint them gold?
Yes.
Yes, I have to do it. I said, "I have to do it."
When that first piece of pipe goes in the ground, yeah.
That is correct. What we are doing is there's, we have some restrictions because we just got the award letter, okay? We can't go willy-nilly and do a whole bunch of stuff because GLO won't pay for it. There are some things we can do behind the scenes, however, that will put us in a position that once the contract is signed and they give us the double thumbs up to go, we're ready to hit the ground running. So we're going to be getting those behind-the-scenes type stuff now and I've worked with the team. You should also know, when it comes to this pipeline, you don't want just anybody helping you. And the team that we have assembled for this pipeline deal, and I'm going to call this the core team, it includes Duset Engineering, Langford and Associates, Texas Land and Ride Away, Wet Rock, we have our city attorney, Ms. Gad, we also have Mr. McCarthy, who's with us tonight, and then we have key city personnel. I'm going to tell you right now, this is the team you'd want to bring in a twenty-seven mile pipeline. This group of people that are assembled will take care of this town and make sure these residents get their water, get it on time and get it right. And there will be no hiccups when we do. So just to let you know, we've already got a core team assembled there as well that was put in place long ago. So I'm very excited about where we're going with this. As I mentioned in one of the council meetings in the past, the timeline from groundbreaking to water flowing, and this is just an estimated approximate timeline based upon two-hundred linear foot of pipe going into the ground per day and a minimum of four teams throwing two-hundred foot in per day, we're looking at between eight to ten months. It's very aggressive timing, it's very doable. But that's just to kind of give everybody, because everybody's wondering, okay, now we got the grant, now we're doing this, how long is it going to take to receive? Well, we want to say approximately about eight to ten months from the time we break ground. So that's something to look forward to there. Moving on with the sports complex, like Mr. Hernandez says, there's a few, there's a few little hiccups there, hiccups we couldn't see that when hell is put in the turf that we're starting to find now. Unfortunately, the drainage is the problem and not really the turf. If you understand how the drainage goes, it drains into Escondido Creek and the problem is, is that the outfall in Escondido Creek is well below the water line. So when Escondido Creek backs up, it covers the pipe and nothing's coming out of that, so everything sits. And that baseball field is the last thing to drain to go into Escondido Creek, so of course, water's going to sit there before it drains. So we now know what the hiccups are, we know what our opportunities are and we can begin to work to try to take care of these opportunities to make everything better. So we are getting some nice exposure and one thing Mr. Hernandez didn't mention was that we do have an individual who brought a team in recently, terminated recently and he's looking to lock up the field for the rest of the year on a pay regardless of play terms. In other words, he's going to sign a contract with the city, he's just going to pay us and if they play, they play, if they don't play, we still get paid. So it's really a good deal there. Moving on to the projects, because we still have several going, we have East Main working. The design of the road is actually starting to perform the way it was designed to perform. I'm not going to stand here and say it's the greatest thing in the world because it's still just subface, but based upon where I was in April, standing in the rain with the water pelting me, watching what was going on ankle-high water down Waverly versus the other day when I was out there in the rain, it's a long way, it's night and day. To that point, the crews were out there today, I was watching them, they were putting in the forms, they're going to try, weather permitting of course, to start again pouring the concrete road tomorrow. And their goal is to do half of East Main. Whether or not they get half done or not, I don't know, but at least they're going to try to start tomorrow. So there's progress in that area for all the residents down there to stay. One thing Mr. Higgins didn't mention about Gramm Road, they do have that tie-in completed. Now, once they're off-site, then we're going to change gears and we're going to start looking at it. So the residents of Gramm Road are getting a brand-new road from New Aces all the way down to Escondido. We're going to come back over that road and we're going to do what's called an overlay. We're not going to do an overlay is where we'll go and we'll just cut a little bit out and put fresh asphalt in versus what's called an FDR, full-depth replacement, where we would go in and dig the entire road out and build a brand-new road from the ground up. So we're going to come back with an overlay from New Aces all the way down to Escondido after these guys get done doing what they're doing. That's when we're going to start looking at that, getting that taken care of. I can't tell you how long it'll take because again, anybody who's ever dealt with asphalt knows asphalt is completely weather contingent and temperature contingent. So, you know, it's going to be based upon weather conditions and things of that nature, but we're going to try to get this done as quickly as possible so that the residents on Gramm Road, whatever inconveniences they may suffer, will be minimized or minimized at any time. Okay? Building C is coming along. It is painted and it's nearing completion. The original completion date on those bathrooms is the thirtieth of June and Marshall Company seems to be flicking right along with that. I don't see any reason why they're not going to hit their mark. As a matter of fact, I've been pretty impressed with Marshall and Company since they've been on site. I say they're probably the best contractor we've had working on this complex, barring none, and I was able to touch all of them, so I really do like this crew. Building A still has a few hiccups and we're working through those hiccups to get things taken care of. We're still waiting on some final... We're still waiting on some finalizations of the elevator. And once that's done, the elevator will be operational. The contractor who had the bid on Building A, of course, as most of you know, we got tired of waiting on them. They were dragging their feet. They weren't taking care of the city of Kennedy. I told them to leave. We are charging them liquidated damages, so if they ever come back to Kennedy, that's just going to add to the cost they're going to owe us. But they have our countertops, and they've got to bring our countertops back to us. And we still got our countertops in and that, as well as we're going to get the soft drink machine installed. But Pepsi's going to take care of that for us. So, there's still a few little things like that to get done on that, and we're working on that. But other than that, Mr. Hernandez and the city personnel and the city staff has been taking care of most of those things that the other company failed to do. And then Marshall and Company has graciously offered to help us out with their expertise and some things. And so, we took them up on their offer. Six S Engineering is the engineering team that spearheaded that TDA grant out there off of Waco that we've got coming in. So, if any of you have ever had any experience with Six S Engineering, you'll know the caliber of work they do and that. They're still in the kind of design phase right now. But they're going to be the ones that's going to spearhead everything and put everything out for bid. And they'll do the pre-bid meetings and all of that. And then, of course, the last thing, our water line. Well 17 has been drilled. It's right now waiting on the downhole well video and the TCDQ submit report. And then, well 18 is in the final stages of root development. And then, the next stage after that would be for the pump team to come in and localize for the test pumps. That's kind of where we are on all that. Anybody have any questions about any of that?
I have a question about the water transmission line project. But I understand part of that is going to include a 1 million to 2 million elevated water storage tank?
Yes, sir. That is what we put in there.
Has the location been determined for that tank at this time, or is that to be determined?
That's to be determined. Duset has been given specific instructions to perform that study for us as to where that's going to go. It's going to have to go someplace to where the city's going to be able to benefit. Because what happens is, water storage tanks don't just store water. What they do actually is, they actually create pressure. Right now, we work on a clay valve system here in Kennedy, which means if something happens, you've got to go shut off all these valves all around. And sometimes you've got to shut off two or three valves. With a water pressure system, we can get away with a lot of that, and our water pressure will go up. When we have that, those issues that's on that agreed order that Mr. Higgins was mentioning, they'll all go away. That will help us take care of all of that problem for us. As well as some things that I know a couple of the counselors and I have discussed regarding the RRO plant and making it more dedicated, like to the prison. What that will do is, that will pull the prison's population off our water source, which, again, will make everything go up for us, which, again, will keep us in the good graces of TCDQ all the way. Which is what we're trying to do.
Any other questions for Mr. Lynn regarding that particular group of report items?
I have a question about the current projects.
What's that?
I have a question pertaining to the current projects on East Main Street.
Yes, sir. Can you come forward to the microphone? It's a big room, so it's difficult to hear sometimes.
Well, as he said, they're working on East Main Street.
Sir, can I get you to present your name for a minute, please?
My name is Kenneth Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Smith.
I live at 407 East Main Street. They're doing a good job over there on the street. It's about time they'd done it, and we appreciate what they're doing. But I have two entrances pertaining to my property, and it's blocked off. Now, what I'm doing is parking on a lot next to me that I don't have permission to park on. I was going to ask the lady, could I park on it? But the contractor, Russell, he put base on that lady's property. I don't know if he had permission to do that. But I asked for a gate in the alley so I could park when I come in from work and let that happen.
Which home is yours, if you would help me here, please?
If you, right when you turn the go down East Main?
Yes, sir.
I'm right there in the trailer house.
You're right there on the left?
Yes. The purpose of me having a pink stain yard, so I don't have to park my vehicles on the outside.
Do you have that kind of metal carport with the black SUV-type vehicle?
Yes.
That's yours?
Yes.
Okay, I actually was addressing that with them today. So, I will get back on that, and I will address that with them again. Unfortunately, you're on the side they're starting on.
Yes.
To pour the concrete.
Don't get me wrong. Mr. Russell spoke to me last week.
Okay.
He was supposed to start on that project Tuesday.
Yes.
Land that seeming, but due to the rain, I guess he wasn't able to do it. So, I just kept on going to work. Then I came in yesterday and couldn't even get into the spot.
Okay. If it's okay with the council and the mayor, why don't you and I get together outside of the meeting? And I can probably see what I can do to help you a little bit more directly. How's that?
All right. I appreciate that.
Is that fair enough?
Yes.
Okay, very good.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir. Any other questions for the city manager before we move on to financials? If not, then we'll move on to financials.
Okay. So, this month, we're, month eight of our budget year, yes. Budget year's almost over, which means it's time to start the whole process again. So, we should have consumed about 66.67% of our budget to date. So, that's our benchmark. So, let's keep that in mind when we get into revenues and expenditures. But as always, I'll start with the liquidity. General funds at roughly about 3.6 mil. The hotel motel tax is at about 2.2 mil. Water and sewer is at 853,000. And the paving fund is at about 2.4 mil, which gives us 9.2 million in the tax pool accounts. At the time I prepared the report, we had about $900,000 in the pooled cash account, which gives us a total available liquidity of $10.1 million, which translates to about six and a half months' worth of bills. So, we're still right within that range where we are designed to be. So, on the revenues, the general fund brought in $512,000 for the month of May. And then, they put some about 4.1 million for the year. Again, we're at 37%, so we're underperforming the budget. But again, we have to keep in mind on that, that's due to the fact that we've been buying land, and we're transferring money from the tax pool accounts to pay for the land. And a transfer of funds is not revenue. You don't book it as revenue in the books. So, it makes our revenue look worse than what it is. I'll show you a benchmark here where you can look at that'll prove my point. The water and sewer is at about $760,000 in revenue. It's giving about 5.2 mil for the year. They're running about 69%, so they're actually outperforming their budget. So, again, just keep in mind, when we're talking revenues, if your benchmark is 66%, numbers lower than 66 is an underperforming, which means you're not meeting your budget. And numbers over that is outperforming, which means you're exceeding your budget on revenues. On expenditures, the general fund, they spent $513,000. Puts us at about 8.8 mil for the year, 78.36% of the budget, so we're underperforming there. And that's due to the expenditures of the funds for the property. The water and sewer is at 637,000, total 4.2 million for the year. Their expenditures are 59.26, so they're outperforming the budget. Again, just to make sure I repeat this, for expenditures, it flip-flops. If your number's 66 and your peg number is lower than you're performing, you're outperforming. If your number's higher in expenditures, then you're underperforming, which means a lower number, you're saving money. Higher number means you're spending more money than you budgeted. When you get down to it, if you look down to the highlight, the net increase/decrease, you'll see that that number in the red is 3.6, okay? Just to give everybody an idea, where are we with all this buying of properties that we bought, especially when we paid all sorts of cash for this rideaway and all that? We spent about four, a little over $4 million in property. Add that positive four mil to that 3.96, I mean, 3.6, and you have a positive of about $400,000. So, if we not bought property, that number would show a black, it would be black, it would say $400,000. So, that's kind of how that all works out, because we don't book and transfers revenue. That's why I said. One thing I'd like to add in regards to Chief Ash's brainchild of the Lubian Park, we spent just a little over $12,000 so far to see what we are. So, he was pretty accurate with that. Anybody have any questions about the financials?
Any questions for Mr. Lynn regarding financials? Thank you, Mr. Lynn.
Thank you, ma'am.
The next item is the Consent Agenda. This section shall provide for items that require action by the council, but where little or no discussion is anticipated. By single motion, second, and affirmation, majority vote, items under this section are approved without further discussion or action. Number eight, consideration and approval of regular city council meeting minutes of May 11, 2021. Number nine, consideration and approval on the financials. Everyone have the opportunity to look at the minutes and the financials? If there's no questions or comments, I would entertain a motion on the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve that consent agenda.
I'll second that.
A motion from Councilmember Douglas, a second from Councilmember Sines. You call a roll, Ms. Bevan?
Ms. Schultz? Yes. Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Cynthia Sines?
Yes.
Johnny Rodriguez?
Yes.
Douglas Meyer?
Yes.
All in favor, motion carries. Next on the agenda is Ordinance Resolution, Other Action Items. This section shall provide for all other official discussion and action items provided for consideration by the council. Item number 10, Consideration of Possible Action in Regard to Directing the City Manager to Seek Request for Qualifications for Grant Administration Services Relating to the Texas Department of Agriculture, TDA, for the Texas Community Development Block Grant, Sewer Improvements Grant recently awarded to the city of Kennedy. We have a presentation from Mr. Lynn.
Thank you, ma'am.
Okay, so, what we have is, whenever you go out for a grant, they usually make you do an RFQ or an RFP for a grant administrator right up front. And so, you get this grant administrator, and then they write your grant proposal for you. That's usually who you use all the way through. This particular grant was not expeditiously awarded to the city of Kennedy. We fell, somebody fell out for whatever reason, and we benefited from it. Unfortunately, the particular grant writer works for an organization in which we terminated their relationship with the city of Kennedy. I had information that I thought was good, that this individual also had a grant-writing business on her own, aside from this organization. And when I reached out to her to talk to her, she had told me no. So, she works wholly for this particular organization. The city of Kennedy does not wish to do business with this organization. Therefore, we need to go out for a grant administrator so that we have someone to actually run that stuff for us and make sure we're following all the benchmarks we're supposed to be following and everything on this. And they'll interact with TDA. So, that's why this is on the agenda tonight, okay? Any questions?
Any questions for Mr. Lynn? Any further discussion? If not, then I would entertain a motion on Agenda Item Number 10.
Go ahead and make a motion to direct the city manager to seek requests for qualifications for grant administration services relating to the Texas Department of Agriculture, TDA, for the Texas Community Development Block Grant, Sewer Improvements.
I'll second.
A motion from Councilmember Rodriguez, a second from Councilmember Douglas. Ms. Bevan, if you'll call the roll.
Councilwoman Schultz? I'm sorry. Schultz?
Yes.
Councilman Parker?
Yes.
Councilman Sines?
Yes.
Councilman Rodriguez?
Yes.
Councilman Douglas?
Yes.
All voted in favor, motion carries. Item number 11, Consideration of Possible Action in Regard to Ordinance Number 21-08, An Ordinance of the City of Kennedy, Texas, Amending the Code of Ordinances, Chapter 2, Administration, Article 2, City Council, Division 2, Rules of Meetings and Order of Business, Subdivision 3, Order of Business, Section 2-62, General Order, and Section 2-63, Placement of an Item on Agenda Subsection C, Providing a Repealing Clause Providing for Severability and Providing an Effective Date. And Mr. Lynn, do you have a presentation on this?
Yes, thank you, ma'am. Okay, at the end of the last council meeting that we had, where we had the items on the agenda, Councilman Douglas wanted to make sure we got this on there. That's why his name appears on the agenda as well as mine. This is the result of our workshop, this ordinance. The language was done in this order just as requested, especially that one section. I got that in there just like you all asked it to be. The only thing is, you know, like I like to take ownership of my footpaws. And I knew something should have been in here, and I overlooked it. And when I sent it to our attorney for the final two thumbs up, she caught it, and she put it in there. That is why you have a copy on the table and a copy in your packet. The copy on the table is the attorney-approved edition. So, this is that. And so, by approving this, we can get this ordinance changed. And it's, at least on paper, a little easier for you guys to put stuff on the agenda.
Has everyone had the opportunity to review the changes to the ordinance? I've read through it several times, and it looks very good. It looks exactly what we talked about in the workshop, so certainly good for me. Any questions regarding this from the council for further discussion? If not, then I'll entertain a motion on Agenda Item Number 11.
I'll make a motion to amend, to approve the amendments of Ordinance Number 21-08 as stated in Agenda Item 11. I'll second.
A motion from Councilmember Douglas, and a second from Councilmember Parker. Ms. Bevan, if you'll call the roll.
Councilwoman Schultz?
Yes.
Councilman Parker?
Yes.
Councilwoman Sines?
Yes.
Councilman Rodriguez?
Yes.
Councilman Douglas?
Yes.
All voted in favor, motion carries. Item 12, Consideration of Possible Action in Regard to Establishing a Date and Time to Conduct a Workshop for the Purpose of Modifying the Operations and Maintenance Agreement Between the City of Kennedy and the San Antonio River Authority Relating to the Escondido Creek Parkway Park. I'm the presenter on this. I contacted Mr. Lynn after attending the last meeting of the Escondido Creek Parkway Oversight Committee. And during that committee meeting, it was a request given to me by the members of the committee that we hold a workshop due to concerns expressed by, largely due to Galen Elke, and some things that we may or may not be able to change with the current situation that could help us make sure that this new park gets properly taken care of for as long as possible. So, I think it's a good, we've had some very productive workshops, and I think this will be a good one as well, because that's, the Escondido Creek Parkway is a real jewel for the city of Kennedy. And we want to do whatever we can to take care of it. This is drawing a lot of attention to Kennedy, and a lot of new visitors coming to town and looking at it. That's a good thing for Kennedy, Texas, so. That's basically it in a nutshell. Any questions from the council or comments? Anyone opposed to having a workshop? If not, then it's just a matter of picking a date.
Take time.
Is there a date that you would recommend, Mr. Lynn?
Um, let me look if you're in the calendar. I know that the twenty-first, I'm out, so I'm gonna be available that day. But, I think, where are we at? Today's the eighth. See, Councilor Douglas, are you completely out of school now? I mean, for KISD?
Yes.
I wanted, I wanted to preface that.
Next week, I will not be in town for a training class in San Marcos. The following week, I'm teaching at the STEM camp, but it's local.
Okay. So, since you're teaching, what does, uh, say, how does next, how's that Thursday, the twenty-third, look for you? I mean, the twenty-fourth. You're out the twenty-fourth, okay.
I mean, any, any day that week is fine, because I'll, I'll be done.
What about Tuesday, the twenty-second?
Tuesday, the twenty-second, yeah, I'll be here that day.
Does that work for everybody?
Well, I think I have a wide range of that thing. Third Tuesday, the third Tuesday.
Wait a minute. One, two.
It's the fourth.
It's the fourth.
It is the fourth, right.
Okay. June twenty-second, seems to work for everyone. Uh, so, I'll entertain a motion on this item. Oh, uh, six P.M., is that a good time for everybody? Six P.M., June twenty-second at six P.M. Would someone care to put that in the form of a motion?
I'll make a motion that we schedule a workshop between the City of Kennedy, City Council, and the San Antonio River Authority, Escondido Creek Parkway Oversight Committee for June twenty-second at six P.M.
We have a motion from Councilmember Douglas and a second from Councilmember Parker. Ms. Bev, if you'll call the roll.
Councilwoman Schultz?
Yes.
Councilman Parker?
Yes.
Councilwoman Sines?
Yes.
Councilman Rodriguez?
Yes.
Councilman Douglas?
Yes.
All voted in favor, motion carries. So, we'll have our workshop on June twenty-second at six P.M. Item number thirteen, consideration of possible action in regard to establishing a date and time to conduct training for the purpose of city council meeting procedures. Mr. Lynn, you have a presentation?
Um, do you mind if I sit for this one?
Sure.
Okay, very good, thank you. This is, uh, during our conversation in the last workshop, I'd made the, uh, suggestion about holding a workshop, have some mock agendas, and walk everybody in and out, figure out what you all want to do and how you want to do it and that. So, that's why this is on there. I don't want to say there's no hurry for that. We don't have to do that on the, you know, twenty-second and the twenty-third, just, you know, or if you all just don't want to do it, we can just not do it. But, I felt that there was enough council members that wanted to have that to put it on the agenda, so...
Any discussion from the council? I'm not opposed to anything that can help us do things better and more efficiently and, uh, more productively, and I'm certainly not opposed to it. There's no further discussion or further questions from Mr. Lynn, and I would entertain a motion at this point. We'd have to select a date also.
Yes, sir. I mean, we could, we can put this off to sometime in July if you all desire. I mean, whatever works, whatever works for everybody.
I think the twenty-second would be full. We're getting pretty full.
I was thinking July might be better, because, you know, because we've already, we just set the June twenty-second workshop, and, uh, it might be good to, it was a little breather. Pull up in my calendar here. What about July twentieth, which is the Tuesday following our city council meeting? A week after the city council meeting?
We could, we could do that, except that the Parks and Rec Board meets that night.
Oh, okay.
Of course, we could put them in the council chambers again.
What about Thursday, the twenty-second?
I have an event at the gallery that hopefully all of you will be at.
Okay, well, then not that one, then.
No.
Twenty-seventh of July? That's a Tuesday? Two weeks after our council meeting? I'll be there.
If we want, we can just table it, and, I mean, we just set it aside, put it back on the next agenda at the thirteenth council meeting, and talk about it, then give everybody time to take a look at their schedules, maybe into July and early August. Because we've got to keep one thing in mind, too, ma'am, as we start to get into July, I usually like to have budgets wrapped up, uh, so that by our August council meeting, you guys are adopting the budget. So, we are going to be discussing budgets at some point in July as well.
That sounds like a good idea to set it aside for now.
Okay.
I would entertain a motion at this point, to set aside the item.
To set, to table it?
Yeah, to lay it on the table until the next, kind of, to the next council meeting, that's when we'll pick it back up.
I'll make a motion to table agenda item thirteen until the next council, next regular scheduled meeting.
A motion from Councilmember Douglas, is there a second?
I'll second.
I have a second from Councilmember Sines. Ms. Bev, if you'll call the roll.
Councilwoman Schultz?
Yes.
Councilman Parker?
Yes.
Councilman Sines?
Yes.
Councilman Rodriguez?
Yes.
Councilman Douglas?
Yes.
All voted in favor, motion carries. Next item on the agenda is an executive session. Item number fourteen, closed session. City council will meet in closed session pursuant to the provisions of Chapter five fifty-one of the Texas Government Code in accordance with the authority contained in A, Section five fifty-one point zero seven one, consultation with attorney, B, Section five fifty-one point zero seven two, deliberation regarding real property. I would entertain a motion to go into closed session at this point.
I'll make a motion that we go into closed session.
I'll second.
There's a motion from Councilmember Sines, and a second from Councilmember Douglas. Ms. Bev, if you'll call the roll.
Councilwoman Schultz?
Yes.
Councilman Parker?
Yes.
Councilwoman Sines?
Yes.
Councilman Rodriguez?
Yes.
Councilman Douglas?
Yes.
All voted in favor, so we will, at this time, the time is seven seventeen P.M., we will be going into executive session. Ladies and gentlemen, you're welcome to stay, or you're welcome to leave, your choice. It's nine oh four P.M. We are reconvening back into open session. The next item on the agenda is item number fifteen, open session. City council will reconvene in open session, at which time, action on the matters discussed in closed session may be considered, A, Section five fifty-one point zero seven one, consultation with attorney, B, Section five fifty-one point zero seven two, deliberations regarding real property. This time, I would entertain a motion on the discussion in closed session.
Now, go ahead and authorize, uh, make a motion to authorize the city manager to pay service company Suez seventy-five thousand dollars in order to settle all claims by city council.
We have a motion from Councilmember Rodriguez, is there a second?
I'll second that.
We have a second from Councilmember Sines. Ms. Bev, if you'll call the roll.
Councilwoman Schultz?
Yes.
Councilman Parker?
Yes.
Councilwoman Sines?
Yes.
Councilman Rodriguez?
Yes.
Councilman Douglas?
Yes.
All voted in favor, motion carries. Next item on the agenda is items to consider for placement on future agendas, governing body, city management.
There's one more.
Oh! Section B.
There's, there's one more with that first one.
Under fifteen, Section B? Oh, is there a, another motion in regards to item, agenda item fifteen, open session?
I'll make a motion that we entrust the city attorney, Ms. Gatt, to continue, um, her course with deliberations, um, with Hanson. I'll second.
A motion from Councilmember Douglas and a second from Councilmember Parker. Ms. Bev, if you'll call the roll.
Councilwoman Schultz?
Yes.
Councilman Parker?
Yes.
Councilman Sines?
Yes.
Councilman Rodriguez?
Yes.
Councilman Douglas?
Yes.
All voted in favor, motion carries. Agenda item number sixteen, items to consider for placement on future agendas, governing bodies, city manager and city attorney. Are there any items that any council member would like to place on any future agenda?
I would, if it's okay with the council, I would like to ask, on the workshop, on the twenty-second, we're scheduled for six o'clock. I received an email this evening, right before coming to council, from Karnes City, the tax assessor has to be on an agenda, has to be approved, for them to calculate our rates, and they need that done at a June meeting. Would it be okay if we put that on the agenda as a special session, June twenty-second at five forty-five P.M., right before we go to our workshop?
It's probably not going to take a lot of time, is it?
No, sir.
Yeah.
It'll just be the one item. Okay, I just want to make sure I, make sure all the council is okay with that.
I have one item that I would like to place on our next regular meeting. I'd like to request an agenda item to be placed on the agenda for the July twelfth regular city council meeting for a presentation by Clay Beatrick with Asset Protection Group. Clay reached out to let me know that his company offers services to help cities such as Kennedy protect their infrastructure assets. Since the city will see major changes and major investment in its infrastructure over the next few years, I thought it would be a good idea for the council to hear the presentation and have an opportunity to ask questions about what his company has to offer. Any other items for agendas? Move on to item number seventeen, announcements of community interest and/or upcoming events. I have just one, uh, Second Saturday Coffee in the Park with the Mayor is coming up, June twelfth. The pavilion, where we normally hold it, is at the pavilion at the Escondido Creek Parkway, um, but it has been reserved for that date at that time, so we're going to shift over to the amphitheater and have it right next to the amphitheater there. And that's going to be, uh, Sat, this coming Saturday, June twelfth, from nine to eleven A.M. It's just casual conversation and coffee, and we've talked about the City of Kennedy, where it's been, where it is now, where we want to go, so... It's been some really good conversations that we've had for the, for the first ones, and looking forward to the next ones. Does anyone else have any announcements?
You said that was going to be in the amphitheater?
Yes, the amphitheater.
Where's that at?
At the Escondido Creek Parkway. It's, there's like an area that has stone seating, kind of in a semicircle, and there's electricity there, so we could set up some tables and plug in the coffee pot.
The entrance to that is right off of Fifth Street.
I think I need to update the...
Yeah, you just need to change it from the pavilion to the amphitheater on the...
They're only about a hundred yards apart, through the same general area.
Uh, Joe, I'd like to announce it, too, just for those who are present here. Uh, Second Street Gallery will be, we are celebrating our sixteenth year in business, um, this month.
Congratulations.
In July on the fourteenth. But we will be having, uh, we're calling it a sweet sixteen anniversary celebration with, uh... So far, we've got about fifteen artists, uh, we're looking at having at least twenty-two involved in the show. Uh, it's always free to the public, open to anyone who wants to come. Um, we've got it set for the twenty-second of July, it's a Thursday evening from seven to nine P.M. And we'll be sending out some stuff later, but just if you guys think about it, mark your calendars, and, um, you know, we'll be sending official invitations soon. I'm excited.
Congratulations, and what a wonderful thing you offer to this community. My daughter, you know, took art lessons there, and she won an award for art, as, as a matter of fact, for her kind of eighth grade class, she got best art student. Those lessons paid off.
I love that.
Any other announcements?
Um, I, I believe I saw, I want to say, I think it was on the Chambers email blast, um, the Karnes Second Friday Breakfast is starting again in August.
Oh, I hadn't heard that, okay, August.
I, I think, right?
I did see that, yes.
Which, I mean, if you haven't been to it, um, I guess this would be, were you, were you here when that was going on?
I was, I can give you a brief rundown. It's an early morning event on the Friday, I believe it started at seven A.M., if I'm not mistaken. Uh, and there's usually, like, there's coffee, and there's, uh, donuts and cookies and goodies that people bring. And it, it, it was a joint event hosted by all the chambers of commerce within Karnes County. They would, they would rotate. One, one month it would be in Kennedy, and then next month it'd be in Karn City, and then Rungy, and so on.
Yeah.
So, I always thought it was a great event. It was well-attended, there were sometimes thirty or forty people there, and a lot, a large collection of community leaders that could give updates on information for all the different groups that they're involved with, such as Richard Robinson, would give an update of what's happening at the hospital, um...
The superintendents would attend and...
Yeah, the sheriff is usually there, and you would talk about the sheriff's department, so it's, I, I enjoyed going to him every, every time I went, so I'm glad to see it coming back. Do we know the location of the, the August one?
I'll have to go back and look, I don't know for sure.
I know that they just announced it, Jake, so it's just that it is going to be coming back.
Okay, stay tuned.
I'm happy to announce that.
That's good news. Any other announcements? If not, then I will declare this meeting adjourned. Thank you, everyone.